We got everybody on line. Time is now six P M. We're gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna, this is the joint planning session with Vice Wood Town Council's special call meeting and the regular planning commission meeting Monday, August first, twenty twenty-two at six P M.
Kurt, could you, uh, call the role of town council, please?
Yes, sir. And I'll actually just go ahead and call everybody.
Okay.
Eddie Baldwin?
Present.
Sloan Griffin?
Present.
Rich McKendrick?
Present.
Donald Brock?
Here.
Mayor Franklin, I see you on Zoom there.
I'm here.
And now we'll go to the P C. Malcolm Gordon?
Yeah.
Ed Kessler?
Here.
Erica Page?
Here.
Marcus Taylor? Ken Coleman? Martin Wells?
Here.
Jamal Mosley?
Thank you, Kurt. And we did have notification posting of the meeting agenda according to state law. Mr.?
Yes, please, Mayor of Town.
Thank you. I'll be looking for an approval of our agenda tonight. Make a motion to approve as is.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Nice having you. So y'all will join Councilman McKendrick in the pledge of allegiance and our invocation tonight.
Join me, sir, pray, please. Our Father and our God, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight and do the town's business. I thank you for the planning commission and the volunteer work they do for the founder of Blackwood as well as all boards and commissions. We continue to pray for our residents. Father, we do pray for those people who are still struggling with COVID and ramifications that that illness is still causing in people's daily lives. Pray that you'll put your hand, a feeling on them, and they can get back to a normal routine soon. We pray that you go before us and all we do and say this evening in this past year.
We move on to part two tonight. Discussion item, part A, county administrator update on request of proposals to rewrite zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of Proton. Um, following the adoption of a comprehensive plan, it's important to bring the zoning ordinance up to date as well, and that's why I requested this update in this year's budget. I published a request for, a request for, published a request for proposals to rewrite the land usage ordinance. It also includes a request to assist the town in developing an annexation policy. Advertisements on our website and on the South Carolina Business Opportunity website where we publish all our requests for proposal. And it's, the request proposal is due August twenty-fourth, and once reviewed, I'll bring a recommendation to council. I just wanna get, uh, while I had town council and planning commission here, just wanted to get everyone updated.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Uh, councilman, you have any remarks? Hearing none, we'll move on to action items, part three tonight. Part A, discussion and approval of the cost to use the fields at Doko Meadow Park. Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of Proton. Um, so last week, uh, the regular town council meeting, this was on the agenda, and we're requested to be deferred to this meeting. Um, I can give you, uh, my recommendation, but I'm sure everyone has put a lot of thought into this. Um, what I would recommend in council, just consider covering the cost to use the fields until, uh, January first, and then when we establish where the lower fee will be, and fifty dollars, which just seems to be so much higher than the surrounding, uh, fields that are for rent. Um, and that will be adopted for January first, along with, um, all the fees that we've been using for the park in Doko Manor, which we're currently working on, and that'll be part of that package. Um, but.
Councilman, comments?
Mr. Proton?
Yes, sir, Councilman Griffin.
Um, Mr. Williamson, do you have a total amount of what that cost would be for the remainder of the year?
Um, so this is estimated Blackwood Soccer was twelve thousand eight hundred, and then, uh, Blackwood Bengals was sixty-four hundred, so that's roughly nineteen thousand.
How much was Blackwood Bengals, sir?
Uh, sixty-four hundred was estimated based on what they've requested and what they've used.
Is there anyone else?
Those are the only ones that have requested, uh, to be, uh, to have, to play at no charge.
What about the other football league?
Uh-huh. Um, oh, the football league, yeah, they are no longer, um, using the field.
Their season ended?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So, so we're, I think the last meeting, um, I stated is my preference, and I mean, it's sort of will of the council, um, to look at just finishing the year out. I think that changing things upstream really, you know, will cause them a financial hardship, and that financial hardship will be turned over to the parents, uh, to pay that, and they might barely made the pay for what they're doing now. So, you know, I'm more in favor of, uh, finishing the year out and moving forward. I think my, um, cost amount was ten dollars an hour. Um, that's what I would do, um, January, but I will yield to the rest of the council to see, uh, what they think. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor of Proton? Mr. Mayor, from there?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
And I know, um, Mayor Franklin is joining us, um, by phone as well. Um, and based on the fee structure that we're working on to get before council, before, obviously, before January first, for the purpose of discussion, I would like to make a motion to reduce the field fees from the current fifty-dollar fee structure to a twenty-five-dollar fee structure effective January first, letting those who have reserved the fields from August second through December thirty-first use those fields at no charge.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? This is discussion, discussion, go ahead.
Um, I see one representative here from soccer. I want to know, you know, the question as far as how the twenty-five would work versus a lower amount.
Um, Mr. Mayor of Proton, just for point of order, so before we discuss this motion, I believe it needs a second, and then you go to the discussion.
I will second it so we can go into discussion.
Okay, great.
So it's from properly motioned and seconded, and now in discussion. Welcome.
Sorry, I don't know all this technical stuff, guys. I just coach soccer. Um, yeah, as I said last time, and I appreciate y'all, everything you do, and, and looking for us, the fees are as structured as they are, uh, if they're laying it would be huge. Uh, just for reference, as I said, being a five-one-C-three organization, we do get a discount. Uh, we pay ten dollars an hour for a lighted field through the county. We pay Ridgeway for our new program, for a program field that they're going to develop for us up there, our little ball field, ten dollars an hour. Calmstone, which is a paid organization, profit organization, eighteen dollars an hour. To your question, councilman, uh, I just number running. Just for, based on a hundred and twenty players, what we're budget on for the year, an additional increase of ten thousand dollars is gonna affect us roughly thirteen hundred and ninety dollars based on, uh, the hours we currently have budgeted with the town that they agreed to, uh, which works out to roughly twelve dollars and seventy-one cents additional that we're going to pass on to each different player. Um, that cost is, goes directly to the player, so, uh, we do have a little bit of leeway in there, so we probably wouldn't pass it all on, but it is a direct cost to the player, which again, we do provide scholarships for those that can't afford it when we can, but it, it's a lot, a hundred and twelve dollars.
So your registration fee now is a hundred dollars?
Yes, sir. Of which nine thousand, some roughly, is, uh, season is for technical training, and we pay all of our players get special technical training from a company called, uh, Corver Coaching, instead of just parent coaching, so we make sure they get a certain level of guaranteed, uh, quality training versus volunteer parents. It's just been a portion of our program. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all for everything y'all do.
Mr. Cahoon?
Thank you. Have a question. Have you received financial support from the town?
We received a thousand dollars from the town last year. We've never requested, each tax dollar, we've never requested any funding. Even at that time, we didn't request it. It was just, uh, I think Councilman Brock did it on our favor, and I appreciate it. Again, that was used a hundred percent for scholarships for people that couldn't afford it.
So you received a thousand dollars in last year, last fiscal year, and you're slated to receive a thousand dollars in this current fiscal year?
I haven't seen the budget.
I believe that's intended. That's in the budget. But again, if we do, it'd be used for scholarships. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think, I think Councilman McKendrick's motion is very fair, considering he is talking about waiving the fees the remainder of this year, so nobody would pay the fees this year, and these fees would take effect in January one, twenty twenty-three.
Right. Mr. Mayor of Proton?
Yes, sir.
So if I understand this correctly, Mr. Cahoon stated at the prior meeting that he had effectively a handshake agreement with Steve Hasbrock to use the field for the remainder of the year. Is that correct? Okay. There was no agreement with Ms. Dow in the town to use the field or any, uh, way to reduce fees. Is that correct, Mr. Williamson?
Okay, the only reason is because I took what was already being done, and said, that's not been approved by council, so it needs to come before council.
I'm, I'm trying to understand where we are, how we got to this point.
Right. It's because Blackwood Soccer Club should have come to, to request the benefit also. So, I mean, that's, that's why it's at this point now.
Yeah. And Councilman Griffin, I believe your recommendation is to create an equal opportunity for everyone to use the fields at a reduced or an equitable rate.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In, in more standing line with the ten-dollar rate from the county.
I, well, number one, I, I think twenty-five dollars is, is, it continues to be excessive. Number one. Number two, it is worth noting that the Blackwood Bengals are slated to receive eleven thousand five hundred dollars in hospitality funds, and the soccer is slated to receive one thousand dollars. If we wanna talk about equality, we aren't there.
Mr. Mayor of Proton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Williamson, uh, what is the amount of free use that we provided to the Blackwood soccer program?
Well, uh, for just from August.
You equate the contribution in kind. Is the contribution in kind, what's the amount?
All right, so from, from basically from this point to the end of the year, it's twelve thousand eight hundred.
Okay, so that's the same as writing my twelve thousand eight hundred dollar check, correct?
Right, that's the value. I mean, we're not receiving the fee from that.
Okay, so I just wanna make it clear to Councilman Brock, that is your apples-to-apples comparison.
It's actually not, Mr. Mayor, when Blackwood Bengals are, we're gonna receive an additional sixty-four hundred dollars in field use. So it's not apples-to-apples.
But this is just from August first until the end of the year, not the entire use.
Right, but take last year, for instance, it would have been roughly the same, correct? Plus the thousand dollar donation.
Correct, that's correct.
Okay, so what we're doing is we're not being equitable across the board, and this council's trying to move in that direction.
I agree.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor for, for Mr. McKendrick's motion. Uh, I'm gonna call for the question now, but there's no more discussion.
Um, sorry, so go ahead.
I just had a, a clarification, because it starts on August second, um, then everyone, everything that was used, uh, prior to that, um, from Ms. Dow, uh, was, she'll pay the full amount. She has been using it since the beginning of June, and that's when it came for council at the council meeting in June.
I believe that. My motion would be that any money is owed for field use until tomorrow would be paid from tomorrow to beginning of the year, we'd get no charge. Twenty-five dollar charge would go into effect January first.
Correct, but it's a fifty-dollar charge from June first to August second.
Yes, sir. And, and again, um, we're not gonna clean all of this up, program by program, but we can clean it up moving forward.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor of Proton, Councilman McKendrick, are you recommending that Ms. Dow pay the fifty dollars an hour from June one to August one?
I am.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Councilman McKendrick, would you, um, consider your motion moved from twenty-five to ten dollars an hour?
I wouldn't, and my justification there is, we, we are certainly not Richmond County Parks and Recreation. We, we don't get county tax funding. We don't have the ability to say, we're gonna try to compete with a tax base that funds our budget. What we are gonna try to do is meet somewhere in the middle to say, we have an asset that we're gonna allow programs to use that charge their individuals to be a part of their program, and if they choose to use the Blackwood fields, they would be in, under my motion, twenty-five dollars an hour.
Mr. Mayor of Proton?
Yes, sir, Councilman Brock.
Mr. Williamson, how much would Ms. Dow have to write a check for if this motion was passed?
I'm not sure exactly. I have to go back and calculate.
Was, was it the amount that?
Well, it, the sixty-four hundred was actually included, included that amount, so, um.
Was it approximately half, thirty-two, thirty, thirty thousand?
I think it was when I put this on the agenda, I believe it was, uh, nineteen hundred, um.
Was it in last week?
Something, I think it was June, I believe, but, um, we can, I mean, yeah, I, I, I mean, just for the sake of discussion, I would say half.
Half.
Probably less than half, if she's going from August first to November.
Twenty-four hundred, according to your memo, dated June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
All right, so, Councilman Griffin. Question, um, well, point of, um, um, question on, um, uh, prior question, I know we're not Richmond County, and I'm not comparing this to Richmond County. Um, I do want, the council should have been made aware of the earmarked money, um, that I requested in the sum of five hundred thousand, uh, from the state to improve the fields, um, this coming year. We should have received notice on that. Um, so we will have money to upgrade our fields, um, to a standard, and I get it, we, we will need money, um, to maintain that standard, um, moving forward. Um, but I, I'm always cautious to, you know, as far as kickback to these awesome programs that we have in town, so I'm not opposed of, you know, covering the costs. I'm just looking at the twenty-five, uh, right now.
Mr. Mayor of Proton, twenty-five dollars is excessive. I would offer a friendly amendment if Mr., if Councilman McKendrick would be willing to hear. And I'm also, I'm also in the position that if we're gonna waive fees, we should waive fees through the end of the year. We're gonna, if we're gonna waive fees, let's waive all fees effective June one.
Councilman McKendrick, would you consider that re-entering that in your motion? That way Ms. Dow would not owe anything. That way it would be equitable as it could be across the board. But Blackwood Soccer and Blackwood Bengals Football would pay nothing this year. If not, we've got a.
Well, let's make, let's, let's call, call the, uh, call the question and vote.
All right. Your motion's been made, it's been seconded, we're gonna call for the question. Mr. Williamson, will you do a roll call for me?
Councilman McKendrick?
Aye.
Councilman Griffin?
No.
Councilman Brock?
No.
Mayor of Proton Baldwin?
Aye.
And Mayor Franklin?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. It passes three to two. Item B, discussion and approval of purchase of the chairs for Doko Manor. Mr. Williamson?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Uh, chavari chairs are a type of wedding chair that, that many people request and use when they book the weddings at Doko Manor. As we discussed during the budget session, the town can purchase these chairs and then rent them for weddings to quickly make back the cost to purchase them. Um, Ms. Coggan's gathered three quotes for two hundred and fifty of these chairs. We recommend that council approve the purchase of two hundred and fifty chavari chairs from bizchair.com for fifteen thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and fourteen cents, which was the lowest quote that we received, and is priced as within the budgeted amount.
Mr. Mayor of Proton, my move to, uh, approve via unanimous consent.
Second. We have this motion on the floor to approve. We have a legitimate second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against? Approved. Thank you, Mr. Williamson.
Thank you, Christie.
All right, now we're to part four, open citizens' comments. Do we have, we have anybody sign up, or anybody in the audience would like to offer a comment? That ends our part of the council meeting, and I look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, man. Enjoy your vacation.
Councilman George?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I don't think we need a break. We have a very short agenda this evening, so we'll, we'll press right on and, uh, start with, uh, notification and posting of the agenda. Mr. Wilson, can you confirm that was done in accordance with state law? Yes. Thank you. And, uh, approval of the agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. Item C, let's move on for approval of the minutes as presented. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes, please? Motion and second, motion and a second. Um, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. I'd like to make a note for the record, so we can move quickly on to our action item and, uh, item two on the agenda. Mr. Williamson, would you, um, set that up for us, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, item two, action item A is the zoning text amendment twenty twenty-two dash zero three dash T A, amending the Blackwood Code of Ordinance, Chapter one fifty-five zoning, specifically Section one fifty-five, dot four eight zero, initiation of amendment to establish minimum acres for zoning map amendments. Um, for most municipalities in this area surrounding Blackwood, which includes Richmond County, City of Columbia, Forest Acres, and Casey, uh, there's, in the zoning ordinance, they have a, a two-acre minimum lot size for zoning map amendments that are different from the surrounding zoning districts. Uh, Blackwood does not have that in its ordinance, so this is sort of a governing issue to kind of get this, get the zoning ordinance, uh, similar to all the surrounding municipalities and what is considered to be kind of a standard for going to rezoning, and this is for, um, a rezoning that does not touch other zoning districts that is trying to, um, be rezoned to. So, um, if someone were to come in and, uh, request a zoning currently, the way it has been sort of informally enforced is that it had to be adjacent to a, um, a, a zoning district, and that could be rezoned to, to whatever that adjacent zoning district was. But by establishing this two-acre minimum, it's independent. But by establishing this two acre minimum, it's independent of what the surrounding adjacent zoning districts are. And, and then it's just based on the merits of, you know, what's allowed and what's not. But that was just a basic criteria for an application. So this just kind of brings it into compliance with what all the other jurisdictions around have established as kind of a standard minimum acreage for rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. I think that's fairly one thoroughly confusing.
Two acres is generally acceptable.
That's correct, yeah. And that's all looking, there was no deviation from two acres in each of the. Some of them had some differences in terms of, well, it could be rezoned to a different, say, if it was a commercial, a slightly similar but different zoning, commercial zoning district. But I didn't get into that with my recommended text amendment, just because it just gets, we have so many zoning districts, and then it just could be even more confusing. And I think, and then perhaps with this rewrite of the zoning ordinance, we can, if things, you know, additional language like that is desirable, we can certainly add that into it, but it's just kind of a basic criteria that needs to be established, I think.
Any other discussion or questions? I think this is purely for improving the clarity and interpretation of the ordinance, so it doesn't have any impact on anybody in the short term, but it does help everybody understand what our, what our zoning restrictions and limitations are. So if there's no other questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve the text amendment as set forth? I have a motion from Mr. Taylor, a second.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, you'll make that recommendation to amend the text as presented. And having said that, do we have any open citizen comments? Sign up, speak. Right. Okay, in that case, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Yes, sir. Can I hear someone speak?
Mr. Chairman, Mayor Franklin here. I'd just have a brief comment, if you don't mind.
No, please, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I just want to remind all the citizens, I apologize, I should have done this at the outset. The Blackwood Miners baseball team, obviously, won the state championship, is going to the Little League World Series to represent the state of South Carolina. That begins on August 6th in Lumberton, North Carolina. And it goes four or five days, double elimination tournament. We're so proud to represent the entire state with our little town of Blackwood. And I just want to say thank you all to the parents, supporters, and the citizens who help our youth sports. It makes a big difference. And when our kids get to go and wear the word "South Carolina" on their jersey instead of just "Blackwood," it's really special. And I want to say thank you all, and if you can get out there and support them, please do. And lastly, is Commissioner Ken Coleman present? Tonight?
No, not, not tonight, sorry.
He was, he was selected for promotion to Major in the Army, so if you see him, I want to congratulate him personally, and he's doing great work, not only for the town of Blackwood, but for the U S Army and our government. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, well said. Mr. Chairman, can I follow up on the mayors?
Please do.
Speaking of the Little League minors going to the World Series, I want to invite everybody Thursday, August 4th, to Town Hall at 5:45. And the mayor said the Mayor Protem will be hosting a send off for them. Their families, team members, and coaches, and it'll be in front of Town Hall. So I'd like to invite everybody out to do that, and it's an honor to stand in for the mayor to, to send off these worthy children to, to their World Series.
About forty five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome. Any more? This is exciting. Now, okay, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.